I've been so proud of the people of Kitsap County and Port Orchard for the way they have rallied together in these very challenging days we've just experienced starting on the 18th. We have an important evening to come together and we're really delighted that you're here. I'm going to invite Pastor Brown to just give a welcome and let us know where the restroom is. I was eagerly excited to make that announcement. The restrooms are to your left and right down each hall. And I just do want to say welcome to our church. I have been incredibly proud, like Dave said, of how the community has stepped up. But we know the road is long before us and just know that our church, from the moment this happened, began praying for every single person affected and will continue to do so. So it's an honor and I want to say on behalf of this church, welcome to Christian Life Center. My name is Dave Rasmussen. I serve as the Public Information Officer and the Public Educator for Kitsap County Department of Emergency Management. And it's my privilege as part of your team that helps provide emergency management. What we do is we always give safety information at the outset of public gatherings. So we would want you to know that if there was an earthquake, because we're vulnerable to those as well, that what we do to be safe is we drop, cover, and hold on. That means we get down on the ground and we are mostly concerned about the items that shake and move around. And we are about the concerns of the structure of the building. Our buildings are built well, but things fly around in an earthquake. So that's what we do when we gather and we do presentations. We let people know that safety information. We also let people know that yes, there is a first aid kit available as well if we have an injury. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director at Emergency Management, Elizabeth Klute.
Good evening. My name is Liz Klute. I'm your County Director of Emergency Management and I am ecstatic to see as many people who are here tonight. So thank you very, very much for joining us for this information session. I want to set a couple of ground rules here. And that is, this is about the community and that's why we're holding this meeting. So we want to give you the opportunity to ask the questions and get the answers that you need. So we are going to, the first half hour, we are going to very quickly go through our agenda. We have a timekeeper here in front, so he will be keeping us on track so that we don't take up your time. We're also going to ask respectfully if the media would please let us get through this first hour and let the community get their answers and ask their questions. And then we have an hour afterwards where everybody can mingle and you can be introduced and meet the people who are going to be identified here on the panel and out in the audience to get your questions answered and for the media to do any interviews that they wish. So thank you very much and I will hand this over to Commissioner Garrido.
Great, well, thank you. What an experience those of you in this community have had in the last two weeks. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to review some of the impacts and appreciate so many panelists to come and talk with you and to hear what your concerns are. So rather than me going down the line and identifying everybody, I'd just like to ask each person to identify yourself by name and organization and briefly about your role. Very briefly.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Bolger. I'm the Assistant Director at the Kitsap County Department of Community Development.
Good evening. My name is Casey Broome. I'm the Human Services Program Manager, Washington State Emergency Management Division.
I'm Jim Truitt. I'm the Disaster Response Coordinator for the Pacific Northwest Conference of the United Methodist Church.
I'm still Commissioner Garrido.
I'm Port Orchard Mayor Rob Putansu.
And I'm still Liz Klute, spelled with an S, by the way.
I'm Pat Campbell. I'm with Kitsap County Public Works and the Solid Waste Division Manager. So we'll be dealing with the disaster debris.
My name's Stephen Finley. I'm with the American Red Cross. And our focus is on meeting emergency immediate needs.
Carl Borner, Executive Director, United Way of Kitsap County.
I'm JD with Team Rubicon, short-term recoveries while we're here.
So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Dave Rasmussen. And he's going to talk to you about who's who in the zoo, basically. So who was involved in the initial recovery? And this is again, so that you and the audience, when you ask your questions, know who you're addressing the questions to. But then also when we do the mingle, that you know who to go and ask questions if you need some follow-up or you need some additional information. So we'll look at initial recovery partners and then the path forward.
When the tornado came through, we want to first of all, give appropriate credit and appreciation to our first responders who were quick on the scene and were concerned specifically about the life safety issues in the community. They stood up in Incident Command Post and so we recognize the very valuable contribution that they made. At the same time, Kitsap County Emergency Management was standing up its Emergency Operations Center. What we do is we coordinate with a team that is including our first responders, but it also includes agencies within local government as well as our nonprofit partners. We were delighted that we were able, within a very short period of time, to ask Team Rubicon to come alongside of the efforts that were already underway by the American Red Cross with that initial disaster response. The American Red Cross stood up at St. Gabriel Church that very night, a disaster shelter. And so they were there providing the immediate place where people could go. With that underway, Team Rubicon came with an immediate team of pretty much very local volunteers that came and got out to the field to assess some of the immediate damage. They also provided the opportunity for local community members to volunteer and be coordinated as part of their immediate disaster response. Really appreciative of Pat Campbell with Solid Waste just stepping up at the very outset and saying, "How can we provide help and support for the very wonderful spontaneous efforts from local organizations and groups that wanted to rightly make sure that the debris could be removed as quickly as possible?" Very early on, there was a strong sense of the community wanting to step forward to donate and contribute. And so we're really thankful that not only were we able to direct immediate funding to the American Red Cross to help with the cost of that immediate assistance that they provided, but also to the United Way of Kitsap County. And so Carl, their Executive Director, is here with us. They provided a mechanism by which we could receive funds and those funds could help meet some of our very most immediate needs. After an individual has received immediate sheltering support from the Red Cross, there's no more intermediate housing need oftentimes. And so the funding that was received and directed to the United Way allowed for some short-term hotel stays for the families and individuals that were displaced by this tornado. That was our big concern. We wanted people to be out of the cold and into a warm, safe place. So we know that simultaneously, many friends and neighbors were also providing safe shelter and welcome for their neighbors who were displaced. But we're especially thankful for that mechanism by which people could get into a hotel room rather quickly. So with that, we've, and I'm going to turn it back over to my Director who's going to add helpful work.
I also wanted to mention, if you don't know, that the Kitsap Community Foundation stepped up to do a match for at least $10,000. For when the United Way would get a donation, they would match them. And I thought that was really important. And I wanted to mention, when we finish with this segment, we need to talk about the impact to the county and the city because I skipped it on the agenda. All right, so I'm going to hand this over to Mayor Putansu to talk to you about the impacts to Port Orchard.
Thank you, Liz. The transformation I've seen in the last couple of weeks from the first night when Commissioner Garrido and I walked up Harris and Tiburon, and I know many of you have experienced it, the transformation has been amazing. I've heard the term resilient used to describe our community a number of times, in particular by Team Rubicon. Neighbors and strangers stepping forward to help each other out. I believe I've seen every day donated trucks, equipment, work parties, and numerous organizations pitch in to help with the cleanup. As of Friday afternoon in the city of Port Orchard, we currently have 10 structures either red-tagged or yellow-tagged. And I know that number is much, much higher in the county. Of these 10 structures in Port Orchard, only three of them are residences. I'm encouraged to see this dramatic event start to move forward and start into the cleanup phase. When I was driving around Friday, I saw numerous contractors on site. We've got tarps on roofs. But I know that there's a lot more to be done and to get your lives back to normal. From what I've seen in the last couple of weeks, I'm confident that it'll happen. Commissioner Garrido?
Thank you. Well, I think the first word I can think of as to the damages, trees. This was a heavily treed community and I think almost all of them came down, across the streets and closed the roadways and of course, on many houses. You've seen the dramatic pictures of a house with no roof at all, another one with giant gash in the roof, and many, many more that are going to take a long time to repair. This is a neighborhood that we didn't even know. We didn't expect tornadoes before the other day. And now we have a vocabulary and an understanding of just how vicious and drastically damaging they can be in two minutes or less. But I remember seeing all of the debris and all of the damage. And it has been, as Mayor Putansu said, it's been really quite amazing to see the community members come together to help one another. It's really been humbling to see the community members coming together. And other people throughout the community who wanted to help as well. We think we're all worried about you and the community and how we can be helpful to you. I know that Kitsap County has 20 red tags and 15 or 17 yellow tags out. And I don't know how that, I'm looking at Jim Bolger because this is his department. I don't know whether any of those have been resolved this soon or not, but I know that that was the report that I had last week. And we will be working with you, each of you, to the permits that you need and to move forward on the work that has to happen. Let's see, what else did I want to say? I guess we're worried about your housing and about your getting back into your own homes. But I can't overstate the beauty of the community working together immediately. People were helping clear yards and get debris into the roadway. Kitsap County crews were coming through and taking loads and loads and loads of debris off of the roadway and in the county right-of-way and disposing of it quite rapidly. So it was just a day or so before the roads did become relatively passable. And then a lot more of the work went on on the individual properties. I think that's all I'll say. We're here to hear you tonight and it would be really, really important for us to be able to give you as much time as possible to ask questions and tell us your experiences.
We are also wanting to rightly recognize that even as we've gone through this very first phase of the initial recovery, we're moving into the additional or the follow-up phase of the recovery where it's more of a long-term process. And even as we had Team Rubicon step up and provide that initial support of helping to meet some immediate repairs, we've also had the United Methodist Disaster Team step up. And we're really delighted that they are now based out of this very church, Christian Life Center, as their hub and their base for operations. They are available to be contacted on two different fronts. One, if you have ongoing needs for figuring things out and assistance, especially even on that very personal level, you were impacted by this event, we want you to know there's a team here ready to support you. And so you can get more information at the end of this meeting. With that, we also want to recognize that we have our state partners as well that are here to assist us. So you'll hear a little bit more of that. So we want you to know, people have come from near and far to support this effort. And so I want to just pause for a quick moment and just rightly recognize, if you were here as part of the American Red Cross response as a volunteer, would you raise your hand? We just want to rightly see, we've got, I know I saw one friend that was, and she's here somewhere in a room along with Mr. Finley up front. How about our Team Rubicon volunteers? I know we have one right there. And how about our United Methodist Disaster Response volunteers? So we've got a few here, right here. And so thank you so much, those of you who have come, especially from outside of the community, to support us in our time of need. We greatly appreciate that. We want to recognize that. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to my Director to even give us a little bit more of a window on the incident, especially as we move forward.
Well, just really briefly, I think most of us know it was an F2 tornado. It was about 300 yards wide and it traveled for 1.4 miles. So it was a pretty good tornado. I mean, it wasn't a Joplin tornado, but for tornadoes that impact non-tornado alley-type states, it was a very significant impact. The Incident Command Post was stood up at the Walmart initially, unified command between the South Kitsap Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office. And then that was moved over here to this facility, which we were very grateful for, that we then transitioned over to the Community Recovery Center. And we had that open for three days and then transitioned to remote operations. So where we're moving from here, and I'm going to let Dave again talk about it here in a second, is we're moving into the long-term recovery phase. And that's really what we wanted you to have the chance to talk about. And so we're setting up a tornado recovery committee. That'll be made up of the partners that you see over here for the Moving Forward Team, as well as representation from the community. I should mention that we did activate the County Emergency Operations Center. It is still active at what's called a Level 3, where we're monitoring the situation and keeping track whether there's any weather that might come in and impact you unduly.
We know from experience that any disaster causes disruption for families, for individuals, for businesses. And there's no cookie-cutter solution in terms of making things right, making things whole. It really does take a number of people with a number of different skills and backgrounds and levels of expertise coming together with a sense of, we're going to do this and we're going to be efficient with our time, efficient with our resources, and get people back to a better place. So we are in the very process right now of standing up a tornado response or tornado recovery committee that we'll be gathering. And we hope it even gathers this very week on Wednesday. And so know that there will be representation that includes organizations that are upfront as well as others that are not upfront with us tonight, who bring levels of expertise both with the material and property side of the recovery as well as the humanitarian need side of the recovery as well. We want to come alongside of families and specifically discovering the needs that people still have so that we can make things better. So that's the effort and the focus. It's been done other places. We've done it here in this immediate area in the past when these kind of situations come up. It's a short-term focus to meet the very practical and real needs that people have. If you have questions about that committee and would like more information about that, please do visit with me after our meeting tonight. I'll be glad to tell you more of the details on that. Again, we'll have a good wide representation from agencies that have a role to play, our nonprofits, and our faith community.
So two that I would particularly point out, that you may still have some lingering questions or some new questions. Is Pat Campbell here from the Public Works Department as far as debris management? And Casey Broome down here from the state, who can talk about information that needs to be collected towards the damage assessment for the potential for small business administration loans for not only businesses, but also for the members of the public and the community to help with the recovery. So she's the one that's the keeper of that really important information. And I bring that up because my house personally has been hit twice by flash floods. $85,000 was the damage, hit twice in seven months. And if it wasn't for the Small Business Administration, I would have been in big trouble. So what we're going to do now is we're going to ask you as members of the community to take the next half an hour to come up and ask us questions. Ask questions of the government members here as well as the nonprofit partners that we have here. And you can either come up and ask questions or just raise your hand and we'll bring the mic to you.
Okay, so that mic is on. Or Jesse will come to you, so one or the other. We do want to hear from you and that's really why we're here today.
I've got one quick question. We have, we're one of the last ones. We have a tree here. Is it working now? Yeah. Okay, so we're the ones that had the gasoline in our RAC city development. Our house, we have a tree that's currently standing, but it's uprooted. And it's about to take out my neighbor's house, which actually avoided being destroyed. And I haven't been able to get any information from my landlord about getting it removed yet or not. I'm actually more concerned about that because I don't want my neighbor to lose their house. So I don't know if there's an avenue that I can take as a lender to help work on getting that tree removed so they don't lose their own.
So Jim Bolger in Department of Community Development. Typically, you can have dangerous trees removed. We would have to work with the property owner on, you know, the property owner on which the tree is actually located. So certainly, if you want to meet me after the meeting and give me your name and address and maybe your landlord's contact, we can certainly follow up and hopefully add weight to any communication you've already given to moving a tree.
We're learning that we have some microphone limitations tonight. So one avenue is to come to this mic, especially it's much more convenient for us to bring the mic. We still want to do that, so we apologize that we have to open out that many mics to go around. But we do want some of you to come to this mic.
First of all, I want to say, I am so sorry that this has happened. Being from Ohio, I've been through several tornadoes and I know how quick it can happen and how devastating it can be. I'm thankful that nobody was injured. I'm not from in-town, I'm from out in the county. But we suffered wind damage out there. I myself had a tree come down because of the wind damage. And it knocked our power lines off of my main pole. I didn't lose power immediately. PSE instead waited three days and came out and shut my power off because my mask was down off my pole and said, "Oh, well, there you go." And that was it. Get it fixed yourself. Well, my problem is, even though I got assistance to help us with a place to stay because it was two days before Christmas, three days before Christmas or whatever, being on disability, I don't have $1,000 to come up with for the deductible. So I was able to get assistance to stay in a room. But they won't allow me to use that towards my deductible. They still want me to come up with another $1,000. Well, I didn't have the first $1,000. Where am I going to get the second $1,000 and why am I paying insurance? So it doesn't matter if I keep going and getting assistance to help take care of my electric pole, they're still not going to accept that and Libra Mutual says, "Oh, well, that's on you." So my fight is with the insurance companies. And I don't know if anybody else has run into this yet, but if you get assistance, you can't apply that to your deductible. That's my issue. So I still can't get it fixed and now I'm running out of time in my camera.
What I can say is that there is an ongoing commitment to make sure that you do have a safe, dry place to stay in the room. And we do want to collect the individual stories so that we can respond, family by family, household by household, to the particular needs. So we don't know how we might be able to respond, but we do want to find out the particulars of not just your needs, but other needs as well, so that we can collectively try to do our very best in helping.
Thank you.
We're not staying at the house because everything's shut off. So we'll be straight down to the general room. We've got two more days.
They're kicking people out. I remember the VA guy that was on the TV in the VA center and they told us, "We made too much money, they can't help us." I was sent there by the Red Cross people and they said, "Forget it, they can't help you." In fact, I called the United Way and this is what really blew me away. Sorry, don't call the Red Cross. That's what I got from United Way. That was not cool. Okay? That was just not cool. We're up on Ramsey, we up on the map, not, we're okay on that map. Our house is screwed. That's the end of it. We have no house, the roof is gone. We got help from Rubicon, the Kimmel were in help, that was really cool. Pat Campbell's been really cool, she's giving us dump room tickets. I still got massive trash in my yard, I got trees in my yard. I got dangerous trees living in my yard. Geico, we got somebody to give us a fifth wheel trailer, but I got no way to get it there. I don't know how I'm going to get it there for us to stay in this trailer. I can't leave my yard. We had somebody try to root our household, but you have my yard. I'm sitting there going, "What's next?" I'm having panic caps left and right in this crap. I mean, I'm getting told, "Sorry, no help." I'm on Ramsey, everybody's over on Harris helping and I'm doing, I got people videotaping my driveway.
Everybody that we helped you, we regret the people back there for work. So how do you keep this?
I got my brother-in-law, his son, which fell not hurt. My brother-in-law went through my roof. I got my daughter and her friends and my grandchild went over there helping. I can barely walk and my husband can barely stand.
Let me just intervene at this point to say, number one, the first thing I would want you to know is we want you to have interim hotel lodging as is needed because that resource is available when you're wanting to stay in a property.
I can't do it because we have people trying to loot it. We're trying to get out what we can. And my brother-in-law gave us a place to stay. Once we get out what we can, that's what we're trying to do in the rest of the time.
Let me invite you to just visit afterward and try to be as helpful as we can.
Just seems ridiculous. Like, "Sorry, how do I stay?" It's like, we don't pay some work party for it.
Make sure they pack their bags.
Yeah. We'll help.
I mean, I'm just trying to be important and you work hard.
We've been cleaning up, we've got some people in. Thank you.
We got a way of speeding up the permit process for rebuilding? How was that all recovered? So if you're in the county, Kitsap County is Department of Community Development. So if you're in the county, Kitsap County is, Department of Community Development has waived some of our normal processing procedures to kind of expedite permitting for this. So emergency repairs are being done over the counter. So we would, you come in, once you provide us with the information about the type of repair that you want to do, and we'll actually come out to the site if you need us to do that to help you walk you through the process. Or you can come into the department. Once you have a complete application, you're good to go and start doing the repair as long as you're working with a licensed contractor, an engineer, an architect, depending on the type of work that has to be done. And then we really kind of come back and make sure that the work is done to code through the inspection process. So we try and get you working on those repairs as soon as possible rather than the typical way where you would apply, we would review, and then you would approve it, and then you're good to go. With these emergency repairs, you can go right away. I do want to point out that on the refreshment table out there, I did leave a number of handouts. They're kind of clipped together and they provide all the information as well as some application forms so that you can reach the department, you can schedule an appointment, you can come out to your site, or you can come into the office and we can walk you through it. We're also waiving the electronic permit submittal process that the department currently operates on just because we know this is hopefully going to be the one-off for many of you and so we want to make it as simple and straightforward as possible. So you can collect some of these handouts and I know they're out here at the center as well, so some of you may have already picked these up.
I live up Churchway, in Indian River, we have a greenbelt, lots of trees. I'd say about half of them, maybe a little less, have fallen over or uprooted. So they're not completely tipped over, but they're leaning on other trees. There's a lot of debris that's blown in from other houses that have been affected. A bunch of shingles and gutters. Is there any plan by the county to actually get out there and make that area safe and to clean up the debris? Or is that something that we're going to have to do as well?
I did receive that question the other day. I'm not sure who the property owner is of that greenbelt. So we're trying to still research that to determine who really is responsible for that area. Generally, Public Works does not go on private property to remove things because there are certain RCWs that apply, statutes that apply to the funding for Public Works departments. So we're still researching who owns it. If anybody has any idea who owns that greenbelt, is it part of a neighborhood association or?
It's right at the end of Churchway. It's a dense street, so we go right down and it just ends in a big tree, there are a big line of trees. As far as we know, it's not part of any homeowners association. But we're not, we don't know who owns it either, so we don't know who's going to be responsible for making that area safe.
So on the county's website, there is a feature called parcel search. And so you can identify property owners based on an online interactive mapping program. And oftentimes, as neighborhoods have been developed through a subdivision process, there's usually either a homeowners association that's been identified to provide a lot of the maintenance on some of those common track areas that are associated with subdivisions. A lot of times those homeowners associations kind of dwindle and die over the years, but we can certainly look into that if you want to follow up with me later.
I just had one more question about debris piles. We have a significant amount of debris on our street. It's actually in my lawn right now currently, which isn't a big deal. But is there a claim for the, for anyone to come by and pick up? Or do I need to call somebody to get that done?
Yes, so unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, this was not the kind of disaster that people comes out and funds picking up debris piles. So Public Works has been out, they were out the very first day and they cleared the roadways of the large trees. They tried going back to, you know, get the stuff that was in the right way. It was just too congested. So they've actually been out this past week and cleaned up, including debris piles that were there, of vegetative waste only. And they have hauled that away. They have completed their passes on that. Also on the refreshment table, I prepared a handout that's basically guidance for debris management. Because there is no funding available for either the federal government or the state government, we really do encourage all of you to contact your insurance providers first. That really, the first line of funding would be through your own private insurance carriers. There's a list of, on that handout, there's a list of private sector vendors that will deal with vegetative debris. If you need to come to Olympic View Transfer Station, our hours are listed there for structural debris, personal property. If you need some haulers, there are site restoration haulers that are permitted by the public health, they're all listed there. There's also my contact information. If there's our extenuating circumstances where you need assistance beyond what is listed on that handout, please do contact me because there are very, very limited financial resources available, but we do have some available. So the volunteers were being managed by Team WIPACON. They're now being managed by the United Methodist Emergency Response Team. So I know that El Scott Realty has had, the last few days, has had big teams of people out there. So I would suggest if you have debris that needs to be removed, that you connect with our volunteer coordination here through the United Methodist Emergency Response Team. And are you still forwarding debris removal? Yes, I'm. While you're coming up to the mic, let me just clarify a case real quick on the emergency declaration process. Because I think there might be a lot of confusion out there about this. So the city of Fort Orchard did a declaration of emergency, which means that there was an emergency that was bigger than they could handle themselves as a city. But then also it was partially in the city and partially in the county. The county did an emergency proclamation that was done by the county commissioners. And that allowed us to start collecting information on damage towards anything that was damaged that was government-owned goes into a pot called Public Assistance and anything that's individually owned goes into a collection pot of information for individual assistance. Regarding a state proclamation, that requires an emergency to really be over more than one county boundary or like a county-wide incident that requires us to bring state resources in. So the state offered, you know, do we need the National Guard? We really didn't need the National Guard. Do we need to have language interpreters, big teams come in to do translation for us? We didn't really get asked if we needed, if anybody needed that and we didn't get any requests for that. So the resources that the state had available, we didn't need. So we didn't really fall into that category to have a state declaration. Now, a federal declaration requires $10 million worth of damage. And what's interesting about that is that $10 million worth of damage is to public infrastructure. Not businesses, not private homes, it's to public infrastructure. So the state is collecting information on the damage statewide from December 10th to December 25th across the state on critical infrastructure, so like the power lines, like highways. Damage to, I know there was some damage to some asphalt on one of the roads, that counts. So that's one of the things that the state is collecting and they'll be gathering that information. Now by Fort Orchard doing the proclamation and the county doing the declaration, that allowed us to sort of get in that pot of people statewide. If there is a federal declaration, then potentially we could see some funding coming to help with debris clearance, but it takes a while for them to do that. So I just want to make sure you've had an understanding of that process.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on what Liz said about volunteers and needs. After this meeting, if you have a need, ID, I heard power, I heard debris, if you would please go down to the office down at the end of the hall and register your needs, we will do our very best to match volunteers to those needs. If we can't, we will forward those to the newly formed volunteer recovery group and we will work through the process of case management and find ways to see if we can help. But please, we can't help you if we don't know you need help. So please, come down and show out one of our simple forms and then we will know what needs are.
Hi, my name is Casey Broome. I am a human service supervisor for the Emergency Management Division. One thing that I do is I do the damage assessment collective, collection for people. I do people recovery. So I also do the Small Business Administration damage assessment. So I'm going to work with the county and the city and the Long Term Recovery Group organizations. I'm collecting what information they have gotten for you so we don't have to double ask. So I know how much that can be of need. One thing that we may have to come back and look at is insurance information. So if that is something that was not initially collected, we may have to come back and ask for that. So I just ask for your patience because there is a process we have to run, but we do have time. The Small Business Administration Declaration process for physical disaster loan, which benefits both business and people, is 90 days. So we have 90 days to collect that information. If there are any businesses in the room that have suffered economic injury or economic loss, that is also a loan program that they have available and that we have 120 days. Okay, so I understand that this is an event that has recently happened, but we do have the time to collect this information and there won't be any opportunities lost. And just to piggyback on what Jim said, we also work with the Long Term Recovery Group to look for other resources that are available at the state level in different state agencies. So the more information that we can get on the needs you have, the better we are to match you up with the resources that you may need. And I will be here to be able to answer any questions, but I wanted to just clarify some timelines and information that may be collected.
I know we want questions asked. Many people here want to know how we were forgotten. That's where we're at right now. A lot of people, "Am I wrong? Did we lose all the help after the first, second day?"
I want to take credit because of Public Works. That you guys came out from power, from the work, from home, or out.
Can't quite, but the Public Works individuals that came out were kind of licy. We really had to complain and argue until you hit the right person. Sustenance and it's not a good deal. We didn't get them until four days after all. People were there after. Some lady complained that she, somebody went into her house and used her bathroom, you know? Somewhere we had a lot of those stuff like that. I know as an example, the debris, we all have debris. There's still a lot. The front yards are ripped, did your back yards clean? So we still have a lot of trees. We have a lot of trees from county property. During the last work garden, there was just three permits given to people because they had no insurance to haul the debris to the county dump. Why do we have to in a disaster, you know? Take it around all over the county to try to get rid of it? And then we have the dumps closed. So what happened is the volunteers with the trailers dumped on the airport property. The hat is thin, trailers and batcoats over there, trackos, that pick it up. They shut them down. So why are we asking permission to give permits that we have to pay for for people in this area? Why isn't it open to people in disasters? They get free living. So our neighbors picked it up somewhere along the highway by the volunteers that were helping. This should be open to disasters. You didn't know anything about it? I complained about it. We had nowhere to dump material.
I don't know when the dump was closed. It has not been closed.
You're not, oh, we could pay when we have to pay to take it in, right?
Yes.
Open the dumps up to get rid of our debris because a lot of it's county trees. People are out there working. We shouldn't have to pay during a two-week period.
Just something like that. Again, there are very limited financial resources. I understand, you know, if we're talking about whatever it is, you know, 100 homes that were damaged in some way or up to 400. I understand from your perspective, if your house was damaged, you don't care whether it was 100 homes or 1,000 homes or 10,000 homes. But what it means is because of the scale of the disaster, there is no funding coming in from the federal government to help us.
We need to get the funding, okay? Same way with the police departments. They left the next day. They didn't want to come around. They don't have the resources, they don't have the manpower. Get the manpower. There's people, other police officers that donate their time from the county or from the state. I know it's a union problem, ties everything up. Get the resources. This was a disaster. Wasn't a good one, but it was a disaster.
I agree, but again, we can't produce funding from the sky.
I understand. Just get the refund.
That is again what you're saying. If you have insurance, please contact your insurance carrier first.
Public Works County here paid for debris, it's okay.
So I've taken a number of phone calls from folks who said, "Oh, okay, I will contact them." And quite often what the insurance company will say is if you need to transport it, take it yourself, hold the receipt and submit it to us with your claim. For people who really have needs, I have been speaking to individuals. And we are trying to use the very limited funding we have available to help the people who are most in need. So again, my contacting information is on the handout. I can give business cards to people, but we do not have an unlimited supply of funding for this.
So one of the problems here is you've got a city situation in town, in urban area, not rural, where this happened. So the people that are living there on the norm don't have big trucks, heavy equipment, big trailers, dump trucks, ways to haul things. So those folks, they don't get to haul their stuff, save their receipts. And people like me that live out in the country that are coming into town, gathering up volunteers and getting people to load these trucks, I'm over $500 deep in dump fees personally. I know other people are out a bunch of dump fees. And I'm not asking for anybody to give any of that money back. What I'm trying to figure out is when we have this happen? Why do we not have somebody from DEM onsite? Somebody out there that's actually figuring out, is this stuff from the tornado debris? And getting vouchers to be able to dump? We actually jumped through hoops. We figured out places where we can take debris that was not construction debris. Stuff that wasn't garbage, we found places to take it. I took a bunch of it out on my property personally. I had my kids out today, burning all day, clearing up the mess from the tornado debris. So where is the coordination? Where is the county? Where was the letdown in that whole situation? So that I'm not filing any claims on insurance. I lived there, not my insurance, not my issue. Came in to help because we're dealing with people that don't have the means to do it all themselves. Frankly, even if they did have the equipment, their houses were just wiped out. So that's the big problem I think here. And I do want to thank everybody that jumped through hoops because this community's come together, the county jumped in, first responders did a great job. And I understand, they left and bailed right after it was over. They're first responders, okay? So we get everybody else in afterwards. We've got the Department of Emergency Management. I talked to you on the phone, Liz. I know there are people that are coordinating things, but we're, the coordination is out of sight. And we, I've been working there since day one, since it all went down. And the only day that it's been coordinated was when Dave Raymond set up a tent at Long Harris and had a spot where people can walk up and go, "Hey, what's needed, what's going on?" And homeowners could come in and say, "We need help here, we need help there, there's debris piles here." And we were able to actually direct people out and get them to where they needed to be. And that has been since day one. The biggest problem is trying to... And that has been, since day one, the biggest problem is trying to coordinate. We've done a lot in a very hectic mess of confusion. And you've been doing a great job of kind of directing people as well, but it's the biggest, and this, we can't do anything about this storm now, but in the future if something goes on, somebody needs to be on site. Some person identifiable with a tent, with a hat, whatever, so that people can direct the needs where they need them. Because we have a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of activity going on and a lot of need being missed.
And I agree with that. And I am hearing the frustration, but I was there every single day. I was walking around the neighborhood and talking to people. And I know I talked to you and you didn't mention to me that that was a frustration that should be addressed. And I would have been happy to have looked through what, who couldn't do and make sure that you heard back from that. But just like this is the first tornado that you've ever been through, it was also the first tornado that we had to work from. We've learned a lot, and if this kind of meeting is exactly what we need to be able to put together a fuller plan, should there be another, and it doesn't have to be a tornado, another disaster that needs attention or warning? That's right, that's right.
He's exactly right. You know, if this is a disaster or problem, if they look for help from your organization, city, county, state, we're not there for it. That's what it's all about. You guys weren't there to help these people. There's a lot of talk, great much like.
Well, it was a lot, it was a lot of confusion, you know? I have been on disasters. Really wasn't going to bring this up, but I've been on 9/11, Katrina, Haiti, also Harvey, Sandy. I've seen how things are operated. We had no patrol here. The police department left the second day. D E M took over, which is okay, but I see the individuals sitting up here other than the commissioner. I never met anybody until I started complaining. I don't know where a lot of people here are from. I know local companies, you were out at P A C. They were probably the most professional, real value. We should have had a police department here. They're in charge of disasters, rescue. They should have been here every day. The looting we had during the daytime, that people dressed up like hell. They show up, you have things stolen there in the daytime. At night, we patrol in the middle of the night to see if we find anybody. We shouldn't have to do that. Fire department, yeah, I'm partial to the fire department, police department. I give a life tree to one. But they could be here every day. They could have been here for a week in service, help pulling lamps, public relations, some kind of place we just asked and had no control. Somebody step up and take control. That's all you have to do. I think that's what people are asking for. Where do we go? As emergency services, I'm always out giving. I never knew where to go. I never knew who to ask for. I'm part of the receiving here too. And then who do we have to? Just please help. And we can go from here on some great ideas and work out something. Because this helps us statewide.
My name is Skip Olstead. I've been a 46-year resident of Melody Village. And I think the ends of Melody Village were the worst, were the epicenter. I know my place at the end of the cul-de-sac is the epicenter. I lost everything. We lost everything. Every single thing. A little bit of furniture. But then at my property every day, and I haven't seen anybody from the system board or whoever, because I haven't talked to anybody. The first time I've talked to anybody at all was yesterday. The two gentlemen from the Methodist Relief came to my property. That's the first time I've seen anybody. A lot of people sitting on this board. Do you have any of those who might be absent? The sheriff. Where in the world is he? Where have they been? The first day, this is something we need to take up for the future, but residents need to be given some kind of a special identification tag to either put in our car or on our person or wherever. We need to have that. It was difficult for us to get to our property, even to rescue a few things. The police, there were some volunteers that came from other departments, which was very commenable of them. Pals will police even. But the guy was a jerk. He was not a good representative of Pals will police or Pals will people. He was not a good representative of PTA people. He was just not nice. We haven't had police presence at all. I have had, my garage was a disaster area. I mean, it was piled high with two feet of crack inside. And somebody was bringing up the crawl through this dangerous broken garage and stealing what tool I needed the most. My chainsaw, for God's sakes. Not one, but two, two chainsaws. My neighbor, her house was cut in two. Came in and stole a 55-inch TV. Working the police, I have not seen a least person in, since the 18th, period. My wife tried to go online on one, a couple of days later, and called the 20 to complain about the traffic and no control about the traffic. Cell phones were having a lot of problems those few days because of overuse. That's understandable. So our call got dropped. Now, I have called number one a number of times over my lifetime, and they always, always call back. Even if you make a mistake, if you butt call 911, they'll call you back. This time, nothing. So we've had no connection with the police department at all. We had no response from them. And I really feel that that is the biggest letdown of all of our, of all of our needs. We just haven't been protected or helped. And that's their two main words, to protect and conserve.
Hi, my name is Pam. I'm in Pelvis Circle. And I just want to say that the people who helped the needs the most in our neighborhood was all of our neighbors. That was it. We were out there pleading. We were out there picking up things. We were out there checking our neighbors and checking everybody. That's all I have to say.
My name is Darrell Olstead. My husband just talked, you know? When I heard it, I was at Givens, and he called to tell me our house was gone, so naturally I went. I tried to get down Harris and was turned back, and I could see the fiber and everything. This, whoever he was, I don't know, he was dressed in brown, was not a very nice person. He told me I had to leave. I said, "My husband is down there. I have to make sure that he's all right." Did he say I can communicate with them or, but no, no. He said, "You have to turn around." Saying that, he shrugged, showed respect, and I let him. Really poor, that is poor. On the other hand, we have had, I am humbled by the number of people that have come to our home to help us. People from all over the county to pack goods. I mean, it has been phenomenal. Now we just offered a free chainsaw. But I need to say a few things there. I hope that you, as a county, the people, take this as an opportunity to improve the situation so that when the next disaster happens, there's, we have help.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Raven. I coordinated the spontaneous volunteering event on Facebook. It wasn't really so spontaneous because there's like, my firewall on Facebook, so. You know, if you're talking about the release value, I know that there's people in this audience here tonight that were out there volunteering as well. So Friday, for those that don't know, on Friday we had over 50 people show up. 12 trucks, trailers, big enough friends and family yard debris. And this is personal. My cousin is almost destroyed. His fiance was almost killed. So it's personal. So I want to thank everybody that came out the other day, all the volunteers that came out, the churches that brought food and water, the citizens that brought food and water. It was just spectacular. I mean, we rolled up our sleeves and, like I said, you get that redneck response team out there, you give it down, right? So amazing, really, that's why. So on that note, I just want to, I want to, I want to say thank you to you guys and gals, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out and taking the heat here because it's definitely your spot. And I also want to thank the first responders. When I say the first responders, no offense to the fire guys and police guys out there. Talking about people that live there. First, we feel it was trapped. You're the first responder. You went in there. You rescued your family. So the second responders, I don't think that the ones that responded post-911, that would be the police, fire, and everybody else that was, that is generally categorized as first responders. So I want to thank you guys and gals for coming out and doing what you need to do. It was very stressful, very, very stressful. I've been there, done that. I know what you're, you guys have been feeling. Gas leaks, power lines down, you know, potential for structural fire, potential for death. And they lived in there and did what they had to do. Yeah, the area was blown up. It was, it was secured, but that's for everybody's safety. And here I am at home thinking, "What can I do? What can I do? What can I do?" Waiting for whatever to, you know, allow me to get my hands involved and organize what I can do. And I know that I need to just stay away. So the next day, connected with T J Marsden, they were down in Scott Real Estate, we organized a plan outside of the secure zone. Because you know those people with trees, trees down, roofs down and all that? We had to, had to, you know, just jump in and take care of it because it needed to be done. But we needed to stay out of the secure zone. And with that, there was a gentleman that had no power, had a little stove, but had no wood. Somebody phoned him. Got some friends, got some dry fire over to him. No wood because it was wet, see? That's like, you know, that's like we had in the ocean, you know, you drop a boat and you drink, right? When you're strong, you've got this white wood. So anyway, you know, the whole thing is, is, is a learning experience for everybody. And it was a learning experience for me to figure out how I can organize this volunteer effort to get people rallying up. And I'll tell you what, as much as we all despise what we see on Facebook, this is one of those things that we should really be appreciative for social media. So anyway, stay small, stay focused, and you know, I'm going to tell you, gentlemen, from the United Methodist Response Team and all, put it together, all right?
I just want to, I want to make sure you guys understand, you did good. You had your employees who were out there. They were awesome. There's just a couple of things under the law or command that people needed, they didn't get. But they did great out there. The public works, they were fatigues before daylight until dark. It was impressive to see these people, the power companies. That's what they really needed. Gardens to pick up couldn't get in. And they will not come back into next week because they won't change their schedule. Here's something for our councilmen, is they can come early, six, seven, eight right now, or four, five, six, and seven where they can get in, but they refused to. They didn't want to talk to me. They wouldn't let me talk to a supervisor. And that's what you guys did, yeah?
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I'm with the South Kids App Health Line, where locals is making here in town. And I just wanted to reach out to anybody that needs food, pet food, household items. Please contact us within about 10 minutes of this tornado unfolding. We have people contacting us. We've been in our community for a long time. And they, they know, they were kind of roots on the ground and wanted to know how they could help, if they could make donations. So about 10 minutes in, we had people earmarking donations for a tornado relief. So we do have some funds. I would encourage you to talk with the gentleman with the Methodist Response Team. We're going to be working with them. I hear, you know, these dump fees and things like that. They might be things that we're able to assist with. We have a very generous community. If they need, please reach out to us. I've got some business cards and some brochures. Again, my name is Jennifer. We'd love to be able to help in any way we can. Thanks.
We've got a lot of good, I'm going to just invite one more from the community, and then we'll have some closing remarks.
Hi, my name is Freddie Gilpin. I was down by the carry and chase area, which was kind of near the end of it, but with a lot of the damage we had was wind from the trees. We had to clear the carry street area because the fire agent had come down the street for a fire hose fire further down. The gentleman had a tree in his house and another tree across the middle as we began. At the same time, on the chase road area, we got electrical wires being burned down by branches on the trees. So myself and a couple of other neighbors, their job was basically to keep people that were walking around the area away from the live electrical wires until P S E got there. My comment, more than anything else, is that the city and the county obviously depend on the state and the federal government for disasters such as those coming up that we're expecting either tomorrow or 50 years from now, like the earthquake. We're depending on them to help with funding for such disasters to help take care of our citizens. In the meantime, we have something like this that goes through that doesn't qualify for assistance of funding from those agencies. So my question, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I'm trying to generate some thought, is that the monies that were donated, managed, that were available to be brought in, I know they're probably being used up for housing for the people that needed places to stay. If there isn't funding left available, where is it going to be applied to? Can it be applied to the trees that have fallen or are in a condition to fall in a dangerous state? Can it be applied to removal of trees and debris that is in dangerous areas or on people's property that can cause more damage? That my, basically my question is, if there is any other funding, who's tracking that money? And where can it be directed to? And who decides where that money is going to be used?
I'll very quickly and very briefly respond with Carl's help. First thing United Way is raising money in, money out. So any money, any dollar that comes in will be going out. We'll be doing that through the recovery committee to make sure that everything comes out, that first needs are met first. And then after that down the road, to make sure that insurance coverage is covering it, then we don't pay for it, but if it's not, then we need to figure out how to get that covered. And I guarantee that every dollar that comes in will go out. And if you have any questions about that, join us on the committee. Because we're going to need volunteers to make sure, we need people from the community to make sure that your needs are met. And also pertaining to the, the security part, I've already talked to Liz and Dave. The United Way will step up and take over the voluntary reception centers from now on. When a disaster happens, we'll do what the United Way's from Homewood County did and also have people on site, train people where you can go to, to get into the site. You go through those. To get out of the site, you have to come back through so they know you're out of the site. So we'll be working closely with that, and we, I guarantee, will take over. The other part that I add is that there's a freedom and a flexibility to help use funds where they're needed. So the collective insight and perspective that the committee does together gives some freedom. I'm going to invite just two more quick, brief comments, and then we'll conclude with some closing remarks.
One, having to do with looters and security in the neighborhoods, one would be as soon as P S E can come out and either repair the street line... one would be as soon as P S E can come out and either repair the streetlights, get those up, because at the end of our block, there's no light down there. And I understand there was a tent city or something like that down there, so that's my question. How soon can P S E fix the streetlights?
So, uh, I'm Spencer Rupp. I'm with the first responders at P S E. Light is bright. Um, Black, uh, we're actually working on that right now. We're hoping to get that repaired at the beginning of the week, uh, next week, um, with all the holidays. And hopefully you guys have stayed in power. Just last week, it's, it's been very windy, pretty nasty. Uh, sort of as boring as hard, but yeah, it is on the radar, just to get some light out there.
I was wondering, we haven't had garbage services before Christmas. Um, and we have three very full trashcans out there. We used, uh, not only our regular garbage, but also recycle bins for garbage, but that's what we were told we could do. But now we have additional garbage, and I realize the garbage truck just turned away for safety reasons. We have, they have crews with big equipment through the street there. So I was just wondering, is it possible for you to send trucks through Serenade and down Rhapsody? Please.
So, so I will say that the county does not actually provide the garbage service. It is waste management. But I will contact their route manager tomorrow and just find out what's going on and ask them if they will just, you know, service that area. They may, you know, I will tell you that they probably are not going to be able to pick up anything that are in piles or, you know, on the side, but I will check on why they have not serviced.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jay Lors. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of the South Eastside School District. And we're here really to just help. We want to be part of whatever committee that we get into. Uh, we have like ninety-five hundred students, six hundred employees that really need a channel to help and to assist. And we really want to be part of that. Uh, I'm really impressed that we're having this meeting today because really discussing things and having the courage to come up here and make a statement that says, hey, how can we make that better? Really makes everything else better. So anyway, if you need to know anything that we can help you with, please let me know. Thank you.
So I just want to thank you for being here tonight. This has been really helpful to us. I hope it's been helpful to you too. It is a conversation, as I said earlier. This is a new experience for us. Although emergency management is something that we've been doing for a long time, this level of devastation is pretty unique. And so, um, your thoughts have been really valuable to us this evening and throughout the last week, almost two weeks. Um, the lessons that we've learned is especially that there are some amazingly generous people throughout our entire community and within the whole community. It's been quite beautiful to be able to see that. Um, and I'm grateful to those folks who have stepped forward. Um, in terms of what we've heard especially tonight, yes, indeed. The idea of coordination and support for those who need during disasters is going to hold a lot of attention going forward. And this has been, uh, we've done, um, routine practices in the past, but this has been a real life experience that we have been paying attention to. Your comments are going to help us debrief and help us build a better system for future opportunities, uh, for future disasters, our future difficulties within our community. So thank you for offering up your ideas. I know that you, and feel free to contact me at any time if you have other ideas or any of the other folks at the table. I think we also welcome, um, your feedback. In terms of garbage pickup, Pat said that she would check in on it tomorrow. I too will be following up to make sure that we get garbage service back into your community ASAP. So, um, that said, the rest of us will stay here to be available to answer questions and ask what people mean with your neighbors, um, talk about issues that you, um, have explored and discovered during this experience, and how we together can address future such difficulties in a really, really thorough and positive way. Thank you.